Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this May ninth, 2023, meeting of the Pierce County Council. The time is approximately 3:07 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Grover.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Here.
And Councilmember Mallow.
Here.
There are seven members present, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have seven members present and a quorum. Before we move on, just wanted to alert members of the public, both gathered here and watching at home on Zoom or PCTV, we very well may have to take some unexpected recesses. Our Zoom technology is not working as intended, and in order to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act and ensure public participation, if the Zoom capability goes down, we'll have to recess, and we might not know when that happens. So ask for your patience, and if that's what happens, that's what's going on. Item number three, our moment of, is our pledge of allegiance to the flag and invite folks to stand here shortly and also remain standing for a moment of silence. Our moment of silence today is dedicated to the victims of gun violence at the Allen Premium Outlet Mall in Allen, Texas, this Saturday, May sixth, where eight were shot dead and seven were wounded. This included a family of four who died with only a six-year-old boy surviving. This was the second deadliest mass shooting in the United States this year. Our prayers are with the community members to find strength and resolve. I'll ask Councilmember Herrera to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of the victims in Allen, Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number four is the approval of our agenda. Is there any objection to our agenda as published? Not seeing any. Our agenda was stand approved. That brings us to section five, our consent agenda. Councilmember Campbell, for a motion.
I move the consent agenda as presented.
Aye.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Grover.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mallow.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
Thank you. On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. Item six, messages from the executive, our judges, or prosecuting attorney. There are none today. That does bring us to section eight, proclamations of wards and our appointments to boards and commissions. We have a proposal R 2023-64 in front of us. Councilmember Hitchens, for a motion.
Chair, I'd like to move Resolution R 2023-64.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve R 2023-64. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-64, a resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Month of Pierce County, Washington.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens, to read this into the record.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas, the area that someone lives in plays a significant role in the overall health and well-being, and our surroundings can impact if, how, and when a person's needs are met, which in turn affects their mental health. And whereas, having safe, stable, and healthy home conditions set the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health, and mental health impacts a person's emotional, social, environmental, financial, and overall well-being with significant disparities among racially and ethnically diverse communities. And whereas, Kids Mental Health Pierce County is a community coalition composed of various agencies and professionals that has been working collaboratively to develop a coordinated, responsive behavioral health system that serves the needs of children, youth, and families at the right time, in the best place, and with outcomes for them. And whereas, suicide is now the second-leading cause of death for 15- to 24-year-olds, with teenagers experiencing 17.3% increase in the use of anxiety medications since 2010. And whereas, according to NAMI, Pierce County, 70% of youth age 6 to 17, and one in four adults, experience mental health conditions. And whereas, Pierce County and other regions of the state continue to face a behavioral health workforce shortage resulting in increased wait times for treatment, and there continues to be a need for education and advocacy around mental health parity and adequate funding for behavioral health services in Washington State. And whereas, the Pierce County Council passed the one-tenth of one percent behavioral health and therapeutic court sales tax to further the county's investment in behavioral health education, early intervention and prevention, outpatient services, crisis services, treatment for justice involved, and housing support. And whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and resident share the burden of mental health problems with the responsibility to promote mental health, mental wellness, and support prevention and treatment efforts, and every resident and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. And whereas, Pierce County and its partners have made progress to remain dedicated to improving mental health outcomes by working to reduce stigma and misconceptions about mental illness so that those in need can take that brave first step and seek assistance. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that May eighth, 2023, is National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, and the month of May 2023 is Mental Health Month in Pierce County, Washington, and we call upon the community to follow this year's theme, "Look Around, Look Within: Increasing Awareness and Understanding of Mental Health", adopted this ninth day of May 2023. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hitchens, and thank you for bringing this forward. I'd like to invite to the podium Vanessa Adams, the program coordinator for Kids Mental Health Pierce County, to please come forward and say a few words.
Hi, thank you. Thank you all so much for your support and ongoing dedication to the young folks in Pierce County, the importance of Kids Mental Health Pierce County, and acknowledging that disparities and gaps in services for our young people experiencing mental health conditions is severely impactful professionally and personally. I feel so grateful to you for supporting this and the work that we're doing as a coalition of agencies and providers to support the young folks, improve crisis services, access wellness and care coordination, and support the ongoing workforce challenges and shortages. It's deeply important, and the impact is deep. So thank you so much for all your ongoing support of these services.
Thank you for being with us. We're also joined by Lovey Afarle from the National Alliance for Mental Illness. Can I please invite you to the podium to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you very much, and good afternoon. My name is Lovey Afarle, and on behalf of NAMI Pierce County, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and all of the individuals and families that are affected by mental illness, thank you for proclaiming this May as Mental Health Month in Pierce County. As you know, the challenges of mental health are real, and now, this month, this month of May, is the time to raise awareness about the importance of mental health and to reduce the stigma and misconceptions around mental illness. Now is the time to begin the conversation so that those who are suffering silently are encouraged to speak up and get the help that they need, especially our youth. As noted in the resolution, and thank you for your reference to that, 17% of our youth aged 6 to 17 experience a mental health condition. But you know what? What is even more alarming is that 50% don't receive treatment, and that's because of stigma. Stigma is the real reason that they don't seek any help or treatment. Yes, every resident, as you mentioned, and the community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting the help that they need. Our students, our youth, our young adults, there's a future of our society. Their well-being, both physically and mentally, is important to every one of us and to our community as well. And you know, we need to invest the time and effort towards educating early on and offering ways for them to ask for the help they need, and for those around them to know how to support them. Now, as part of NAMI's efforts to raise mental health awareness and recognizing that early education and early intervention can make a big difference in the mental wellness of our youth, NAMI Pierce County provides our Ending the Silence presentations to schools and organizations. This free evidence-based program is available in three different versions for the students, for their families, and for the staff. But what it does is it teaches how to know the warning signs, how to start the conversation, how and where to get help and advice, and how to offer support, and most importantly, be a friend. Please take a moment this month to help raise mental health awareness. Everyone can help make a difference by educating yourself about mental health, offering your support to those who may be struggling, and yes, being a friend. Whatever way you choose to do this, it's sure to make a difference. As the proclamation states, and I quote, "Each business, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and resident, share the burden of mental health problems with the responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts." As I said, now is the time to do our part in bringing mental health awareness to the forefront. Together, we can realize our shared vision where anyone affected by mental illness can get the support and quality of care to live healthy, fulfilling lives. All of us can make a difference. You can make a difference, and now during May Mental Health Month is the time to begin. Chair Mallow, members of the council, thank you for this May Mental Health Month proclamation on behalf of all of those who live with mental health conditions or who are affected by mental illnesses. This proclamation will go a long way to letting them know that they are not alone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lovey. Appreciate you being with us. Thank you for those words.
And please enjoy your green ribbon and your mental health awareness.
Thank you for providing us with the green ribbon so we can have a very visible reminder about the important messages. We appreciate that. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to provide public comment on this proclamation? Anyone in chambers? Ms. Persson, is anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Hitchens, for bringing this proclamation forward, and thank you to our speakers for not only being here but for your work year round, helping young people and people of every age with mental health issues as it becomes a little bit more, I guess, accepted, even though we still have a long way to go, like you mentioned. One thing we're finding, I'm sure you all know, is that we don't have enough resources. We don't have enough experts to help folks through the mental health challenges that they're facing, so thank you for doing your part in that. I learned, thanks to some research that Councilmember Hitchens did the last couple weeks, that the Peninsula School District, which is my district, had five suicides within the last year of children, you know, in the K through five system. There's middle school and high school students, which is hard to say as somebody with two teenagers without, you know, tearing up. It's not acceptable, and it certainly was not just in our district, but we had the most in the county. I think the stigma, as Ms. Afari mentioned, is a big part of that, maybe young people not knowing how to talk about it or not knowing where to go. But I think access is also a big part of that, you know, when families are working and maybe there's not certainty about who's going to pay for therapy or how the kids are going to get to therapy. And our school counselors, unfortunately, are so busy and they're so limited in their ability to do that kind of work, even though we know that their heart's there and they want to, you know, they're busy trying to get kids on track to graduate or class schedules. And so to have additional partners like yourselves and other organizations that are working with our young people, both in school and out of school, it's just so important. We need to do everything we can, and I think all of us probably know, young people and folks of other ages as well, that are dealing with depression and anxiety and suicidal tendencies and all of the things that are plaguing our community. So it impacts all of us, and I know we're all committed to doing something about it. So thank you for all your work and for raising awareness.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens, for bringing this forward. You know, what you talked about, how important it is to recognize it really early in school or just can make a huge difference, and part of that is educating it through the schools. I was a school resource officer, and you see many different levels of mental health that can come up to a mild case to someone who, around 17 years old, you know, the main, like schizophrenia kind of comes out at the late terms, and people aren't understanding why this child is acting that way. And recognizing those signs early is very important. You also talked about stigma. Mental health affects everybody. It affects kids, it affects the families, it affects government, public safety, affects our professionals, and of course, it affects our veterans also. So this is not just, it's in your family or that family or this corner or that corner. It affects us all, and not just in awareness, but being educated, I think, is really important to catch the early signs forward. I've also heard from, especially on the youth side, of parents not knowing where to take their child. And if they find out, they find that there is not any youth therapist, because it's kind of a niche type thing, and there definitely isn't enough resources for our youth. And again, it's probably the most vulnerable part, time to get them. But I thanks everyone again here, and just like you said, all of us can make a difference. Thank you for the ribbons, and thank you for being here. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here in person and accepting the words that you brought before the council today. I want to call out a couple of things. I'll be brief. I just want to remind everybody that it's okay to not be okay, that you can have bad days. When those bad days or days where you're filled with just emotions that you can't keep a lid on or hat on, or you just don't know how to respond, that's when you need to reach out to help, and that first step is acknowledging that something isn't okay, and it's been that way for a couple days or a while. And that's where people get stuck, because they don't want to admit it. They don't want to say, oh, I'll be better tomorrow, because maybe that's how it's been the last couple times, but this time, it's not, something's not working right, something's not okay, and it's staying that way. And that's when you need to get help. When you are bleeding, you notice it and you do something to stop the bleeding. When you are grieving or having emotions that just won't stop, people can't see that. They can't see the evidence, and so nobody's reminding you to take action. And that's one of the reasons we get people that spiral and end up taking their own lives. So it is okay to not be okay, but when you are not able to kind of readjust or figure things out, that is just as problematic as bleeding, and you need to ask for help. And I know it's struggling, like it's really difficult right now sometimes to find help, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So 988 is a new tool that we have available. Our county website has something. The health department has some resources. There's, I mean, you can Google, there's lots of things, and sometimes it's frustrating, but don't give up, because you are bleeding. We just can't see it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. I too want to really thank Councilmember Hitchens for making sure that we set aside time to reflect on this month, this mental health month. Thank you to our many partners, two of which were here today to help us really reflect, and the many, many organizations who do hard work in community to help those who are experiencing mental health challenges. I really love the message in the proclamation that all of us have an opportunity to be brave and courageous and talk about our own mental health challenges. You know, those of us who do this work every day, we're, you know, some folks think we have it all together all the time, and that's the pedestal that folks put elected officials on a lot of times. I'm here to tell you, we don't. And, you know, I often find, when I share in my community, that, you know, I value therapy a great deal, and it is healthy and welcomed to be in therapy. And when we talk about our own mental health struggles or our own opportunities to seek therapy, it's, it really helps others break down that stigma and see that no matter who you are, folks don't have it together all the time and need to find opportunities to seek help, and thank goodness it is out there. So just, we all have that opportunity, right, to share our own experiences, break down that stigma, talk about our own mental health challenges. It helps others feel more comfortable with being vulnerable and then maybe finding the help they need. And it could be a life transition. It could be something more serious than a life transition that is causing someone, you know, a challenge that they really need help working through. So really appreciate us spending some time to reflect on this and how we help deliver resources to more people, especially those who can't afford it or are having trouble navigating a really complicated system. So thank you again. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Grover.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mallow.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays, sir.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the proclamation is adopted. Please join me in a round of applause. We're going to do something just a little, because of our technical issues today, I'm ever the optimist, and while I'm optimistic that Zoom is going to survive during this meeting, it may not. And so if you will bear with us, I would like to go to the next proclamation. In the event optimism does not prevail and Zoom goes down, during that downtime, we will take a photo and commemorate the moment. So please, please bear with us. I'm going to move us into Proposal R 2023-65, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Morell for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for consideration Proposal R 2023-65.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt R 2023-65. Madam Clerk, will you please read into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-65, a resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming the month of May 2023 as Bike Month in Pierce County, Washington.
Thank you. Councilmember Morell, to read this into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Resolution number R 2023-65, whereas, 2023 marked the 67th consecutive year the League of American Bicycleists have declared May to be the National Bike Month, and whereas, organizations throughout Pierce County are sponsoring bicycling events to promote bicycling as a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation and exercise. And whereas, creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, and grows the economy of Pierce County, attracting tourism dollars, improves traffic safety, supports student learning outcomes, and reduces pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And whereas, bicyclists of all ages throughout Pierce County and the nation are participating in Bike Month activities. And whereas, the citizens of Pierce County should recognize the vital role that bicycle riding contributes to enhancing our quality of life. And whereas, Pierce County is extremely proud of its creation and support of bike and pedestrian paths and the opportunities these paths provide, all ages within our community. And whereas, bicycle transportation is integral to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and is critical to the implementation of Pierce County's Sustainability 2030 Plan. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that May 2023 is Bike Month in Pierce County, Washington, and the council encourages citizens to participate in Bike Month activity in their communities, adopted this ninth day of May 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morell. I'm going to need a little bit of help with who is here to accept. I see some very friendly faces, so thank you. Thank you very much. We have some great partners here to invite up to help us celebrate Bike Month and accept this proclamation. I'd like to first invite up Sean Phelps from Planning and Public Works. Maybe he doesn't want to come up. Bill Brewster, Laura Melody, and Jacob. Who is going to be the brave soul? Melody, please come forward. Thank you for taking one for the team.
All right. Thank you, councilmembers. We're, as a whole, extremely excited to be joining Bike Month proclamation among many other cities, counties, and communities, not only across the nation but across the globe, really. And Pierce County, in recent years, has been taking great strides to increase bicycling and bikability, not just for recreation purposes, but also for transportation, everyday transportation, commuting reasons as well. So I wanted to invite some folks with me today to join this proclamation and recognize them on how they are helping increasing bicycling in our community and highlight some upcoming events for Bike Month. So internally, I wanted to highlight our colleague, Bill Brewster. I represent Pierce County, by the way. Bill Brewster is an avid cyclist, and he has been, he has played an important role in launching our internal Pierce County Employees Bicycleist Group, which has, among, we have over 3,300 employees who could join this group and just encourage bicycling among our employees and reduce the barriers, share resources, information, and get some rides going. The next person I wanted to highlight is Sean Phelps, and he is our active transportation planner with Pierce County, and he has worked side by side with the Parks Department to increase bicycle facilities across Pierce County and also extend trails and make those connections so people can get to destinations across Pierce County and not feel disconnected in the bike system. And some exciting news, the Bike Map has recently been reprinted, and if you do not have copies, Sean Phelps has some here today. And I wanted to also highlight Jacob Myers. He has been the newest member to our team with Pierce County, and he has helped put on the bike swap that took place last Saturday, and that is the 12th Annual Bike Swap that has been on a recent hiatus due to COVID, and it brought hundreds of folks down to the University of Puget Sound where we hosted it, and we've heard anecdotally, folks came from Olympia to Seattle and, of course, throughout Pierce County. And these folks had a chance to buy bicycles, sell bicycles, just communicate with others, and find new routes to get around. And also, there was a kids' area for them to practice their riding skills as well. And within my team, I represent the Pierce County Sustainable Transportation Program, Pierce Trips, and we are also hosting an online challenge encouraging folks to replace drive-alone trips with bicycle trips for some incentives at the end of the month. And lastly, I wanted to recognize Laura Spontzerek. She is-- She is representing Downtown on the Go, which is a very important partner with Pierce Trips, and Downtown on the Go is also a great resource for anyone living or working in downtown Tacoma to get around by any mode other than driving alone. And Downtown on the Go has a lot of bicycle-focused events going on in Bike Month, so I'll just quickly list off a few. They have, next week, Friday, May 19, is Bike to Work Day, and they will be hosting a celebration station thanking folks for riding to work that day. And the following week, on May 25th, they're encouraging folks to ride their bicycles to the Broadway Farmer's Market, in which they can receive a $2 token to spend on food while they're there. But yes, bicycling is not only a fun way to get around, of course, it's a great way to build community, it's an affordable way to get around, and of course, it's a sustainable way to get around. So I appreciate your support in recognizing bicycling as a vital and sustainable way to get around. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Melody. I don't think you're gonna be able to convince anyone else to join you at the podium, but hopefully they'll be able to join us up here for a photo to capture the moment in a little bit. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to provide comment on this proclamation? Oh, we will convince one of the...
Well, I helped...
Excuse me. I'm getting, we're getting away from Pierce County Television. Let's see what they have to say.
We have frozen video going out over there right now.
We've frozen the video?
Five minutes.
Five-minute recess?
Is it my space?
Thank you, everyone. We're back from our brief recess. I think I'm gonna advocate to my colleagues that we proclaim May Technology Month in Pierce County, and maybe that will sustain our technology. Again, thank you to the staff for figuring out our technological issues so that people can participate online or at home or wherever they are participating from. So, thank you for that brief recess. We were in a public hearing on Bike Month. I'm gonna open this back up for a public hearing and invite, excuse me, invite Jacob Myers. I believe you were about to start some comments, Jacob. If you can introduce yourself for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Jacob Myers, and as Melody alluded to, I helped put on the bike swap this past Saturday at the University of Puget Sound, and I just wanted to share a little anecdote. We had hundreds of people there, and there was nothing like seeing, you know, I saw this mother and a 12-year-old daughter, and she came with a bike that didn't fit her anymore, and they were able to sell it, and then she walked away that day with a brand-new bicycle. And just seeing the mom look over, she's like, "Are you ready?" And she's like, "I'm ready." And then they just, like, went off, and a smile on her face, and just, I think so, just biking and what it can mean, you know, and the connections that you can make, you know, as a family, with friends. And we already talked about the importance of mental health, and for me personally, just when I'm on my bike, I know a lot of my worries and troubles just seem to melt away. And so, just the importance of bicycling as a community and a connective activity, just wanted to highlight that. And it was really special to see, there were so many examples of that this past weekend, and just also as a, you know, way to reduce our emissions and, you know, in the fight against climate change, it's critically important. So, thank you all so much for this opportunity, and yeah, I'm fully in support of May being Bike Month. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment on the Bike Month proclamation? Not seeing any mispersons, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Final comments by council members. Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to speak in favor of this proclamation. As someone who has biked thousands of miles all over the world and still bikes competitively, I have a pretty good awareness of what happens when I'm out on a bike. But one of the key things that I always tell new bike riders is please get comfortable with your environment, understand that you're only 200 pounds compared to two tons of metal that's coming down the road. So choose your bike routes safely. As was indicated, Pierce County has invested heavily in what we call linear parks, which are all of our trails and pathways that families and kids can enjoy without worrying about vehicle traffic. And to all the drivers out there, you know, please, please learn to share the road, you know, be cautious when coming up on a bicyclist, you know. We're all out to enjoy our transportation, modes of transportation, and, you know, give us space, and we'll all move forward and enjoy our day. And then, for the kids out there and the families, there's plenty of practical guidance you can get. You can even go on Amazon and get a bike safety kit for kids. Teach them young. All of our fire departments offer helmet fittings, bike helmet fittings. You need to wear a bike helmet. Those, several things that I will not leave my garage with is, one, a quality helmet, a red flashing beacon for my rear of the bike, and then a flashing headlight that I go out on. And this is kind of the interesting thing that I did, was I did some research on Washington state laws and RCWs. And one of the things that I'm very cognizant of is vehicles passing a bicyclist, you need to give them three feet of space minimum. Bicyclists must yield to pedestrians on sidewalks and crosswalks. Bicyclists riding on the road must obey all the traffic laws. Bicyclists are required to use the bike lane or a shoulder. In other words, don't ride down the road, in the middle of the road. You must have at least one hand on the handlebars at all times. And your bike must have brakes. And this is one that I thought was the most interesting. There's actually a law on the books that says it is legal to ride a bicycle drunk, but the police may impound your bike if you are too drunk. So anyway, I just wanna say, you know, what's, what's not like, you know, what's, what is there not in riding a bike in Washington, especially when the weather is like this, an enjoyable event? And though I don't bike to commute to work, if the council would relocate to Frederickson, I will bike there. But there again, I think this is a great opportunity to showcase the ability for motorists and for bicyclists to cohabitate on our roads and our other trail systems. And then, hey, you know, what's there not to like, a bunch of people in spandex? So, that's always a good thing. Anyway, so with that, I encourage your support of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Morell. Thank you for those reminders. We might need to do a study session on some of those laws. Councilmember Herrera?
Thank you, Chair. You know, we talked about Bike Month, but I remember as a kid, bike, it was Bike Day every day, you know. We have many first accomplishments in our lives, but we may not always remember them. Like, I don't think I really remember when I learned how to read. I knew it was around first grade, but I don't know that moment that I learned how to read. But I remember the day I learned how to ride a bike. And I don't think that's too different from most folks, and that's one of the first major accomplishments as a kid. That's like a big, just like you said, the young girl who got another bike was really excited. You know, you see kids when they learn how to bike, it's an exciting, it's exciting, it's a terrifying thing, it's a range of emotions. And, you know, I was gonna add, there's one law that they forgot, Dave, on there, and as, if you were a kid growing up in the 70s, and that is, do not wear bell-bottom jeans while riding a bike. I think I still have the scars on my knees from that, when the jeans got in the chain, but, but thank you for coming out and presenting this today, and I will leave it with that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. In addition to the really great public safety reminders, I truly wanna thank many of our employees here at Pierce County and our community advocates for requesting that we do this and set aside time, and that, you know, the work that we're doing in Pierce County, especially around the Vision Zero program, to really, as Councilmember Morell indicated, we are working hard to build out our infrastructure, to make it, help it accommodate more modes of transportation safely for all users. And we're quite serious about that effort here at the council and at Pierce County. There's many folks, some of them spoke today and are with us, who are helping us really, really realize that vision and do that planning with the community. So, thank you, thank you for the work that you do. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2023-65?
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Gruber?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Please join me in a round of applause. That brings us to proposal number R 2023-67. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
I move proposal number R 2023-67.
I will second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2023-67. Madam Clerk, will you please read into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-67, a resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming the week of May 7 through 13, 2023, as Affordable Housing Week in Pierce County, Washington.
Thank you. I have the honor of reading this proclamation into the record, and this is the first time that the Pierce County Council is taking up and considering Affordable Housing Week in Pierce County. So, a very special day. Whereas all people should have access to decent, safe, and healthy affordable housing, and housing affordability is an urgent and growing crisis across Pierce County as housing costs are rising drastically because production is not keeping pace with demand, which requires Pierce County to increase housing production by 46% through 2044 to meet the need of affordable housing. And whereas the greatest housing need is among the lowest-income residents, requiring the production of 2,300 housing units of affordable housing per year across the county at 50% or below of the area median income, or the AMI, which is $57,070 for a family of four in Pierce County through the year 2044, with over half of those units built for households at 30% of AMI or below. And whereas housing costs are rising faster than incomes, as between 2010 and 2021, median home values in Pierce County increased by 96%, and average rents increased by 67%. That compared to a 30% increase in the county median family income. And whereas, to work in alignment on housing affordability issues across our subregion, Pierce County joined the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners as a charter member in October 2021. And whereas the Pierce County Council adopted a comprehensive plan to end homelessness in March 2022, which lays out a plan to create a unified homeless system for Pierce County, which identifies the lack of affordable housing as the main barrier to existing households from, to exiting households from homelessness. And whereas the Pierce County Council also adopted the first Pierce County Housing Action Strategy in November 2022, which outlines specific actions the county council can take to compel housing development, including options for new funding and regulatory reform, and identified a funding gap of $624 million to fully address the needs of households at or below 50% of the area median income. And whereas the Pierce County Council recently adopted the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act in March 2023, implementing a county-wide 1/10 of 1% sales tax dedicated to the affordable housing and related services that will add $20 million in revenue per year for the development of an additional 600 to 800 units of affordable housing for Pierce County residents at or below 60% of the area median, area median income, as well as housing programs, supportive services, and homeownership opportunities. And whereas one-third of all households in Pierce County, over 100,000 in total, are currently cost-burdened and spending more than 30% of their income on housing and have difficulty affording other necessities such as food, transportation, and medical care, and the need for affordable homes across Pierce County and the number of people experiencing homelessness remains at crisis levels. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that May 7 through the 13, 2023, is Affordable Housing Week in Pierce County, and that all residents, community organizations, and local municipalities are encouraged to join with the Pierce County Council in this observance to advance housing opportunities for our, our community and take local actions to increase the supply of affordable and attainable housing, adopted this ninth day of May 2023. I'd like to invite to the podium Amanda DeShazo from the Affordable Housing Consortium, and followed by Jason Goethe here of the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. Amanda?
Good afternoon. You, like, can't stop smiling, so I can't stop smiling, and I'm just so excited. Thank you. So, thank you, County Council, for proclaiming Pierce County's first Affordable Housing Week. So exciting. I'm Amanda DeShazo, the Executive Director of the Tacoma-Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium. We provide advocacy and education for the preservation and development of affordable housing across Pierce County. The consortium represents over 50 agencies that develop and provide affordable housing, including funders, construction companies, public agencies, and individual advocates who are all dedicated to ensuring that all Pierce County residents have access to affordable housing. We firmly believe that everyone should have access to safe, decent, affordable housing and are so proud to be here today to celebrate all of the great work that our county is doing to further the efforts. In partnership, we've come so far with the adoption of the Housing Action Strategy, the involvement in shape, and the passage of the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act. We're so excited about the momentum that this proclamation is bringing, and we look forward to bringing other municipalities in on Affordable Housing Week moving forward. I imagine that this will be just the start for future efforts. I envision walking you all through affordable housing developments, hosting educational opportunities, and convening opportunities for us to come together in celebration around all of the great work our community is doing. And I wanted to really personally thank all of you for the great work that you've done in the past couple of years to really make a dent in affordable housing. And we're so excited, we've got, what, 2,600 units in development, in some stage of development of affordable housing right now, which is huge. It's really exciting, and I'm meeting with folks every day who are really enthusiastic about also building more affordable housing. So, thank you for this, thank you for this week. It's not just a highlight for affordable housing, but also the county and all the great work that you guys have done, so, thank you.
Thank you for being with us, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, and thank you for also including a third resolution. I appreciate it.
Mr. Goethe here.
Good afternoon, Chair Mello, members of the council. I'm Jason Goethe here, and I'm joined today by my colleague, Mary Connolly. On behalf of the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners and our 15-member government partners, we thank you and this council for this resolution and recognizing the critical need for more affordable and attainable housing throughout our Pierce County communities. We'd also like to commend this council for your work on advancing efforts to streamline regulatory impediments to the production of housing throughout unincorporated Pierce County, and on your work to create or to expand programs to incentivize the creation of more market rate and affordable housing. Thank you for recognizing the importance that affordable housing has played, does play, and, and, sorry, Matt, wait, I'm gonna go back up here. Sorry, I can't read my notes. Thank you for recognizing the importance that affordable housing has played and continues to play in our communities and in the lives of our community members. Thank you for your leadership on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us today. This is a public hearing. Anyone... Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on this proclamation, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Mr. Alton McDonald, invite you to introduce yourself for the record, and three minutes is a timer to your right, as you know.
Agreed, councilmembers. For the record, my name is Alton McDonald, a citizen and taxpayer, live in Pierce County. As I always oftentimes tell the council, no taxation, no representation. Appreciate the fact that the council is addressing the issue of homelessness. It's a good thing. However, I want to know whether or not the council will have some kind of balance to find or to make sure, as we address the issue of homelessness in our community, all ethnicity who are impacted with homelessness get a fair shake to get a home to live in. I don't know if we have some kind of measuring tool to make sure that not just one race of citizen get access to this housing, but it is equitable, distributed among those of us who are homeless. As you know, Pierce County is the highest county in the state of Washington to come on to taxing citizens. I'm a taxpayer, I'm taxed, want to make sure that the taxes that I pay goes to the right purpose or the purpose that those taxes that have been paid is intended for. So, I hope that there's a check and balance to make sure that as we address the issue of homelessness in our community, that everyone who's homeless get an opportunity to get access to a home. And also, with that being said, amenities. I see so many houses, so many different complexes going up around our community, but there's no, there's no amenities to go along with that. There are families who have children, they need a playground, they need somewhere that they can go outside of the home where they can have access to a playground. If you go to the North End, if you go to Northeast Tacoma, you can see what I'm talking about. So, when we have these developers, we're getting these big tax break, I would like for the council and those who are involved in this process to look, we need a playground for these families, not just the housing that's great, but we need somewhere for the children to play, to travel 30 minutes or one hour for somewhere to play, that's just unconscionable, and that should be unacceptable. So, I'd like the council to think about that, and when you talk to your developers to make sure that they have the amenities that goes along with the housing. And thank you for this, for your leadership, Chairman Ryan, on this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment on this proclamation? Not seeing any, Miss Persons, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And first, we have Terry.
I'm Terry Heard. I was a member of the LUAC in Fredericson. It was a constant fight in dealing with the Pierce County minders on what constitutes livability for our development. I worked very hard with them or on them to get them to recognize that when you divide a net developable acre by six, you come up with 7,260 square feet for a moderate single-family density. Well, eventually, that rule was changed, and they put in the regulations, minimum 4,000, average 5,000. Our efforts to make a livability for the community on getting rid of the densification that's going on without any infrastructure, forcing our schools to be constantly overcrowded and the roads overcrowded, and I'm sorry for those people who like bicycling, the roads out here aren't safe to walk on, let alone bicycling. So, please consider, when you're looking at this effort to densify the urban and rural areas, and don't kid yourself, it doesn't stop at the rural buffer, or, excuse me, on the urban growth boundary line. Densification is happening all the way out. Go back to the, and look at what the people are saying, not the developers, because they don't live there, we live there. We are the ones who need to be putting forward the information that should be used because we're paying for it. No one else is paying for it. All of it falls on the people. And as you said earlier in your meeting here, the price has gone up almost 100% in the last 10 years of the property, so have the taxes. So, where's the money going? We're not getting what we're supposed to be getting. Please go back and be considerate of the people who live out here and are being forced ever so often to live in denser and denser and more crowded locations. It kind of gets the attitude of people when they have to deal with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heard.
No additional hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to Jason and Amanda and the colleagues that are doing this and really intentional work around how we can look at affordable housing countywide. When we talk about Mental Health Month, having access to a place to call home, whatever that, that looks like for you, but it's a home, meaning it is a healthy place for you to find refuge, it is a place where you can possibly access telehealth, it's a place where you can cook dinner, it's a place where you feel safe, and it's your own, and you make it your space. And we don't have enough of it, full stop. And we keep adding more, but people want to live here. This is a beautiful part of the world, and a beautiful part of the United States, and so I think the, the work we're doing around really forcing the issue and making sure that we are building at 50% and lower, we're looking at how do we do housing for people who needs all-the-time supports, whether that's physical health or mental health. We need to be doing all the things, and this is just acknowledging that we are going to take that seriously and, and bring our partners together. So, it was, excited to see this on the docket, thank you for pushing it forward and breaking our kind of unofficial rule of more than two proclamations, and I'm not going to say anything about technology. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other final remarks? Well, thank you, colleagues, for breaking our unofficial rule. We, we typically do reserve time for two proclamations, but it, you know, we, this council's been working so hard on affordable housing, it is such a big value of this council. And I think, you know, the, when I review proclamations and I offer suggestions to my colleagues or to staff, I'm, I'm often looking for action. I'm often, you know, I don't want to do anything just, just to do it, just to say the words. What are we going to do about it? Or what specifically have we done that we can highlight? Or what are we going to commit to doing in an actionable way? I can say with a very straight face that this council is absolutely serious about affordable housing. We passed the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act, that is a big, big deal, because we know that permanent affordable housing is not going to be done in the private marketplace without a public investment and public subsidy. Just, we, our private partners have educated us about that, and this council responded. We, we made the, one of our very top priorities in the state legislature, the capital of various items in housing in the state legislature around reform and, and capital investments, including a very exciting investment that was made in Pierce County, a $14 million investment for our local Habitat, who's going to buy a series of close to 80 single-family homes from our Pierce County Housing, Housing Authority that otherwise would have gone on the private market and probably, probably been turned into, right, for, for-profit market-rate housing, not, not keeping them available for affordable homeownership opportunities. We made that a top priority of ours, and we helped our partners at Habitat secure $14 million for that effort. Really exciting. And as Mr. Goethe mentioned, we have in our, in one of our committees for consideration, a really important reform for the State Environmental Policy Act, and how we really maximize opportunities to do streamlined permitting and regulatory reform, right, all the different elements that are being called for in our Housing Action Strategy, we are working on. This is not, this is not just words on paper, this is not performative work for this council, and I'm, I'm really grateful that this council's taking this work very seriously. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2023-67?
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morel.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Crover.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll called vote to seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the proclamation is adopted. Please join me in a round of applause. Let's take the risk and have you come up and commemorate the moment, please.
Poor John.
Well, thank you again, thank you to our guests and everyone involved for helping us celebrate those really important priorities we have. We're at Section 8 of our agenda, ordinances. Councilmember Crover for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move ordinance 2023-9S.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt proposal 2023-9S. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number 2023-9S, in order to the Pierce County Council finding proposed non-inclusive cable television franchise to Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC, for cable system in Pierce County to be in the public interest.
Last line.
Last line is agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor to brief the council.
Yes. Thank you. So, good afternoon. The proposal before you begins at page 39 of your electronic packet. This is proposal number 2023-9S. It would authorize the Pierce County Executive to enter into a renewed cable television franchise with Comcast Communications, LLC. The franchise would allow the company to construct, operate, and maintain cable television system infrastructure and county rights-of-way. This franchise renewal before you would replace franchises that were previously executed in 2009. The proposed term of the franchise before you is 10 years. I'll note that the renewed franchise continues to provide for a 5% franchise fee that's based upon gross revenues, and provides for an increase in the public, educational, and government, or PEG, broadcasting fees that increases to 37 and 1/2 cents per subscriber, and is estimated to generate $100,000 a year in additional revenue. The renewed franchise agreement also provides for the upgrading of two PEG channels from standard definition to high-definition quality, and establishes a density requirement where service must be offered by Comcast. That density requirement is 25 homes per strand mile for overhead service and 60 homes per strand mile for underground service. The franchise before you also includes provisions for financial controls such as quarterly and annual reports, contains administrative provisions, insurance requirements, and other provisions typical within a franchise. The proposal before you did receive a due pass as substituted recommendation from the Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee at its March 28th meeting. It is before the council today for final consideration. I will note that we do have departmental staff, John Baker, from our Planning and Public Works Department, on standby to help answer any questions you may have regarding this franchise. And that concludes my summary and standby for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. John Baker, the department, do you have anything to add?
Not really. You covered most of what we wanted to cover. I do want to reiterate that this does have a density requirement. That is a first for our Comcast franchises, which we are excited for. And then, another change that wasn't mentioned was the change to the drop distance. It's going to be 125 feet to the nearest inside wall, rather than previously, it was, mainly, I'm just going to leave it as it was a change to the language that we hope will make it easier to connect more homes at a standard installation fee. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being available for any potential council, council questions. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on this. When did we begin working on this franchise agreement?
I know this was started even before I got here, which was in October of 2021. So, this has been ongoing for quite a while.
I think I heard like 2014, we've been working on this version since, so almost a decade of work into this. So, appreciate the work. A little frustrated it took this long. I know a lot of people really wanted this across sooner, because with the PEG fees attached, you know, our delay of 10 years on this cost us $1 million, $100,000 a year in PEG fees we would have been having. What this does allow us to do, because we're getting those fees, is now for Pierce County TV to be high-def. So, get ready to see a lot of these faces and a little clearer, and we apologize for that in advance. But I know many people are very excited for the opportunity that this actually gives us, even though it is a, a fee increase. It will be put to good work and would have been, you know, some revenue that we could have been capturing for years, but glad to have it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, I'll, since John has been here the whole meeting, I got a question for you. The duration of this, what is the timeframe that this will be enacted for?
10 years total.
Okay, 10 years total. Can it be opened up at any time during those 10 years?
As in renegotiating? I do believe there are terms that will allow it. I would have to look into that in particular, of how we would go about that process.
Okay. I agree. Okay. Just get back whenever you can, I'm not going to hold up the vote on this, but, you know, as, as we know, technology changes from year to year, and, you know, Comcast is a major player in Pierce County, and hopefully with getting this franchise agreement signed, sealed, and delivered, we can get more cooperation from them pertaining to our broadband issues, mainly in our rural broadband desert areas, as it's called. So, hopefully, this is a good sign, and we can work together more collaboratively in the near future on getting broadband out to our communities. So, thank you, John, for your work on this.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions, so let's move this to a public hearing. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide public comment on this proposal, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Mr. Chair, the light doesn't work.
It doesn't, yeah, since you've been here, I think you have to, there's, there's a timer to your right to help you.
Okay, so I would take.
We don't do that loud noise anymore.
I take two minutes extra. Anyway, good afternoon again. My name is Alton McDonald, a citizen and taxpayer here in Pierce County. I just want to address the issue of open signal. Right-of-way, Pierce County is now granting or entering a contractual agreement with Comcast for open way to use the right-of-way in Pierce County. So, by doing so, just like in Portland, there is a, there's an open signal where a citizen, where somehow the county designate money or created a place where a citizen can use cable TV, and somehow Comcast pick
And somehow Comcast pick up the tab for that. And so it's something that I believe, I know John, that's his name, maybe can look into so that citizen can have this forum where they can go make reservation, once it's created, and talk about issues in Pierce County. All right? So that would be a wonderful thing. So maybe I wouldn't be here, I'd be at the, that site doing what I do here as related to this particular issue. So that's one of my concern, that the right of way contracting with Comcast, and if we can have open signal here in Pierce County, talk about Pierce County issues, where citizens can have the access to cable TV, where it's be a free, it'd be free services and opportunity for citizens to talk about issues here in Pierce County. And so with that being said, I hope that John or the council will follow up on that and I will see what the council find out in their, in their probably inquiry as related to that particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else in chambers, Ms. Persons, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Mr. Baker, I think you heard the public comment about open signal program. Are you aware of that? And if so, do you have any reflections about what we heard?
So I wasn't aware of it at the, but just doing a quick Google search, it seems to be a Portland Community Media Center that they created that allows people to go in and get media services in this center rather than something that comes through a franchise such as this or a cable service.
Thank you for that quick due diligence. You, you heard the public comment, thank you for hearing it. I, I know, I know you heard it and many of us have heard it, so we appreciate that education and we'll certainly think about it. Vice Chair Campbell?
And I, and I think previously or in other cities, it's been called public access onto the, the cable systems. But I know a lot of cities that have that have kind of discontinued it because of use due to the rise in the internet of people being able to broadcast whatever they want to a larger audience whenever they want. And so I, I believe I've read somewhere that many cities have discontinued their public access because time just was no longer being reserved on them because of the internet. Did have a question here, and this would probably go to Ms. Long, because this is a fee increase, PEG fees, but it's part of out there, do we need five votes today? Would this fall under the tax increase?
No, no, this is just a contractual relationship with Comcast.
Okay, but it is, okay, because it's, it'll be up to Comcast whether or not they pass the fee on to the consumer.
Right.
But it is in effect a tax increase on to cable users. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Planning and Public Works staff for all their hard work negotiating this for, for quite some time. In particular, John Baker, who I've gotten to know since I've been on council, and thank you for all of your help. Definitely piqued my interest when I heard that this franchise agreement was coming up and John and his colleagues were really helpful, helping me understand the due diligence that, that they did in these negotiations. And, and I definitely appreciate their success in adding density requirements for the first time in Pierce County and the drop requirements as well, as well as, as the other components of this franchise agreement. I also want to thank our council staff, Jeff Cox and Hugh Taylor, who were involved in helping educate me and make sure that, that I felt comfortable with the components of this franchise agreement that meant the most to my constituents and I feel most of the constituents in Pierce County, although I'm sure they're all thrilled to be able to watch us in high definition. I know most of the people that I talked to are most concerned about the expansion of Comcast services into the rural areas in particular, or anywhere that aren't receiving adequate signals. And Comcast does serve a number of, of areas of my district, in particular, the North Keep Peninsula and the rural North Gig Harbor area. So happy to, to be passing this or to be voting on this today. And I will echo the thoughts of Councilmember Morell that I look forward to future partnerships with Comcast. I know we're embarking on one contract with them to expand their services in the North Keep Peninsula to approximately 526 homes. I would like to see more of that. And I think that these negotiations in good faith on behalf of the county hopefully will lead to additional partnerships. We do have, you know, some, some grants, some incentive dollars, and, you know, I look forward to partnering with them to expand their services and the communities that need that. So thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. Seeing no other hands, thank you to the, the staff that has worked hard for many years renegotiating this franchise agreement and the improvements you're able to negotiate that are in the public interest. Thank you to our staff and thank you to our Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee, who had a robust conversation at its committee meeting last month on this. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Crover?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote to seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Item number nine is resolutions, there are none today. Section 10, other business and announcements. Do members have any other business or announcements today? Ms. Long or Mr. Taylor, do you have any other business for us today?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter that the county has jurisdiction over or is of interest to community members that is not on today's action agenda. We invite you to the podium to introduce yourself and you'll have three minutes to share your comments. Is there anyone here for Citizens Forum?
Mr. Chair, good afternoon. My name is Alton McDonald. I'm a citizen taxpayer, oftentimes stated, no taxation without representation. We have a problem here in Pierce County, whether it be within the city of Lakewood, Tacoma, but it's still a part of Pierce County. On April the 18th, 2023, Lehman Sherrod Tucker was shot and killed at 70 Yakamo. I'm asking anyone who have information about this murder, get to understand they were two suspect, who murdered this young man. He was 20 years old, the 15th of this month would be his 21st birthday. So I'm talking to the community, if you have any information about the murder of Lehman Sherrod Tucker on the 18th of April, please contact Crime Stoppers and give them that information. Parent, the family are grieving and will want to get justice and want to hold those individuals who murdered this young man accountable and be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. Also, I want to thank, I want to thank the juries who have sat through the hearing of Darkest Allen, who and went on occasion, sat through weeks and days of testimony and listened to the evidence and came back with a hung jury telling the prosecuting attorney, Mayor Robnett, that there was no evidence linking Mr. Allen to the murder of the Fort Lakewood police officers in 2009. They were deliberate and they came back with a decision as related to the evidence presented in open court. I want to thank them. It gave me faith in spite of a black man being charged with a crime that he did not commit. The jury came back with the right decision not to convict insufficient evidence. I want to thank the juries for that. Mr. Chair, as you know, in Pierce County, it seems as if to say, the people that breaks the law have more rights than the citizen who obey the law. And the reason why I made that statement is the fact that there are a lot of people who live in this community, I always hear the word fear share. 20 years ago, that was what was going on in Pierce County, fear share. And they're homeless, have nowhere to live, live with their cars, RVs, etc., etc.
Mr. McDonald, I ask you to wrap up, please. I have to be fair to everybody.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you. What I really want to say here is that I hope that we have more enforcement to hold these individuals accountable because it's not okay for them to break into people's business and home and just nothing happens, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. No other members of the public in chambers, Ms. Persons, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to participate in Citizens Forum, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands raised.
Thank you. Seeing no further participants for Citizens Forum and seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council, we are adjourned.